So the village of Sayward respectfully acknowledges that we are on the land. Pardon me, we gathered on in the unceded territory of the Comox First Nation, the traditional keepers of this land. Called meeting to order, introduction of late items. C A O.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we'd like to add to the agenda the need for a closed meeting at the end per section ninety-one C labor relations or other employee relations.
Okay, we should also at that point add a restricted in camera so we can discuss what's restricted. We don't have to be, I'll just ask to leave. Okay. Cancel the restricted portion of the program. I'll just be rude and tell them to leave. Okay. So everybody cut that. We're going into so number thirteen will be under section ninety dash one C. Okay, approval of agenda. As amended, everybody good with? Counselor Paulson, you're good?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Sorry, you're sort of split on the screen here, so you'll have to speak. Delegations. No, you just have to speak. If you wave or put up your hand, I may not see it.
Okay.
Oh, wait, we're adjusting you. No, you're on the bottom of the screen now. It's all good. Okay. That's good. Petition and delegations, none. Correspondence, none. Council reports, none. Reports of committees, none. Report from mayor, none. Unfinished business, none. Well, thanks for coming, everybody. Staff reports. Budget planning session led by Lisa Clark, the CFO. It's all up to you. No pressure.
So, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for joining us. I'll just open tonight's meeting with some, some remarks. I'm really happy that we've all come together tonight for this committee of whole meeting with the primary purpose of having initial discussions around the twenty twenty-three budget planning. So I'm really, you know, frankly, I'm just really proud of the work that staff have done to bring this initial draft to you. Well, it's more than a draft. It's, it's the background information that that we've been working on. And, and then ultimately some options for council to consider. Ms. Clark's done an exceptional job of putting together a binder containing various documents that will that will, we, we hope help you some as newly elected officials seeing some of this information for the first time. So we intend on taking our time and working through the binder, basically page by page, cover to cover. And I think Ms. Clark's open to to comments throughout the presentation if you need clarification and with that said, I think we'll turn it over to Ms. Clark to lead the proceedings.
Is it Mrs. Clark?
It is.
Ms. Clark?
It is.
Ms.
Thank you.
Is.
So I guess I just wanted to start out by saying the C A O had said that, you know, I put in a lot of work putting this binder together, but really it's a team effort. The C A O was, was very helpful in getting this together with me. We worked as a team. So I don't want all the credit going to me. Certainly he did a lot of work on this as well, and I thank him for all of his assistance with getting this together for council tonight. So I guess we should just maybe look at the agenda for tonight. The C A O has sort of gone through the, the welcome, the opening comments and the, the review of, of what we're going to do tonight. It's all listed here on this sheet that the C A O was, was kind enough to prepare for everybody. I've got a quick little staff report that we'll go through. The next thing we'll do is we'll review the strategic planning workshop, workshop that was held earlier this month and look at the draft twenty twenty-three priorities and objectives. Next, we'll go through version one of the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven financial plan. And that's going to include some items such as overview of planning assumptions, why we are here, highlights, options for addressing budget deficits, a summary of surpluses and reserves, and a summary of proposed reductions to service levels and department budgets. We'll go through all of these in detail. And then we're going to look at version two of the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven financial plan. Also go through some recommendations, short-term recommendations to address some deficits. And then look at connecting councils' strategic priorities to long-term fiscal sustainability for Sayward. We'll do a quick little grant summary, capital project summary. And at the very end, do a final summary of the whole twenty twenty-three budgeting process. The other thing on this little agenda is for council to consider a town hall meeting, so we'll discuss that. And the next meeting date's been listed there just for your information, which is March fourteenth for the next committee of the whole meeting. So we will get started. I'm just, Jen's not here tonight to help with scrolling, so I'm going to do that on my screen.
So just while Ms. Clark's doing, I guess fair to say that we're going to be sort of working in as a bit of a team, so we may just be bouncing back and forth and injecting ourselves, or I may be injecting myself periodically, just so you know.
Yes, thank you, which I appreciate. Thank you. So the first section in your binder after our little budget planning agenda is our quick little staff report that I've prepared. Basically, you've seen, seen this staff report before. I think it was presented in January end of January, and it was presented as sort of an overview of the financial planning process. The financial plan is developed through council and through a strategic planning process, which we again went through. And once those strategic priorities are identified for the year, those are then filtered into the financial plan. And it identifies for staff and the public what types and level of services are to be rid of by the village. You know, it's, you've seen this before, so I don't really need to go through it, I don't think, but just for, for the public's sake, these meetings are set aside, these committee, the whole meetings are set aside so that the public can have input into the financial plan. And also so it gives time for council to, if you're getting questions from the public, to, you know, come in and talk to staff about any concerns. Because that's basically part of the, the process is to have the public involved in the financial planning process. So the financial plan by law and the tax rate by law, they must be approved by council by before May fifteenth of each year. So that's usually why we start doing this process late in the, the prior year or early in the current year. Preferably late in the prior year, but because of the election last year, we sort of have had everything pushed, pushed forward. But there's still lots of time. May fifteenth, I know that sounds, you know, like next couple of months, we still have time. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Just so the gentleman know if there's something that you're not understanding, okay, or you need clarification on, no different than a regular council meeting, just put your hand up, okay, and we'll stop and they can, you can ask the questions. Okay?
Yep.
So don't wait until everything is done and then walk away with not a full understanding.
No, and we'll, we'll, staff will give opportunity for questions for, you know, after each section, we can, we can stop, we can pause. Anyone has any questions, we're more than welcome, or more than, more than willing to answer your questions. Yeah. So the, I've, I've included the timeline just for councils' reference, and that's basically just listing out all of the things that are involved with financial plan and when, when we do them and what, what's been done so far. So the first item was that staff reviewed the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six financial plan and existing strategic plan. And that was done November, December of last year. We then worked on the financial plan and capital plan for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven, November of last year to basically now. And that's, that's done, and that's, you know, the, the culmination of that is the meeting tonight. And then, and then the actual process. So our, our committee of the whole meetings, we had one on January thirty-first. We had a strategic planning session on February fourteenth. So if you flip to the next page, I guess I forgot to put in tonight's meeting, so that's not on the list. That was an additional meeting that was added because of the strategic planning session on the fourteenth.
It does have the twenty-eighth down here. Below the box.
Yeah, that's just the, the name of the report. Another committee of the hold meeting has been scheduled for March fourteenth. And then we anticipate the meeting, the regular council meeting on April fourth is when council will do the first three readings of the financial plan by law, with the final reading taking place on April eighteenth. Again, we've got until May fifteenth, so depending on how financial planning sessions go, there is a little bit of leeway if things get bumped.
So the May fifteenth date is put out by the provincial or federal government?
Provincial.
From it.
Through the community charter. Yes.
Through the community charter, so it has to be done by that date.
Yeah. And once the financial plan by law is adopted, then we move into the tax rate by law and the fees and charges by law, which would be an amendment by law to amend the fees for water, sewer and solid waste for twenty twenty-three. And those, those can be done concurrently, so the, the the rule per se is that the financial plan has to be adopted before the tax rates by law is adopted, but you can do them concurrently as long as one is done earlier in the meeting. And the other one is done after. So that's, that's, we, it usually works out just fine. So for tonight's meeting, we just made, made a quick list of items that are going to be presented to you in your, your binder. We've sort of already touched on this, but we'll just look at it again. Purpose goals, I think the C A O sort of touched on that. We're going to go through a review of the strategic planning workshop. Version one of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-seven financial plan. Again, highlights of why we are where we are. Options for addressing budget deficits. A quick summary of surpluses and reserves. A summary of proposed reductions to service levels and department budgets. Moving into version two of the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven financial plan. And a summary, including some staff recommendations on how to move forward. And, and all of this is to connect council's strategic priorities to fiscal sustainability going forward. So that's, that's really all for my quick little staff report. There's a little motion in there just to receive it for information, and then we can probably move into the next section of your binder, which I will pass over to the C A O to present.
Okay, so we need to do the recommendation first, correct? That the committee of the whole received the financial plan from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven staff report for information and discussion. Motion, please.
I'll move that.
I'll second that.
I can't hear you again.
See, oh, sorry.
Oh.
All in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, carried. Thank you.
Okay, so if you want to flip your tab over, you probably, these first two pages, the one that begins with notes from the C A O at the top, you may want to pull those two sheets. And, or actually, pardon me, it's one sheet, not two, it's front and back. So just a, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this because we've, we've got, we, we have another meeting as well. I don't want to take away from this initial meeting that we want to shine on, on the budget side of things, but what I've done in the, since our strategic planning meeting is I've consolidated the priorities that council selected from the long list. And I've shortened that and that, and those are the pages that, that follow here. With that said, I did the first page that you've pulled out, I, it, it addresses, it addresses some, I guess, observations I've made regarding just some things that we could talk about. For instance, so the first one, so you, it's community relations. If you look at the, in your binder, the community relations tab or page, you could just flip that through. It's been consolidated per council's feedback. And so that one is done.
They ask why on page one it's all quarter four?
On page one.
Of the community relations?
That it's all which?
Quarter.
Oh, quarter. Yeah, thank you. Good question. So it, the quarter four is when it's to be completed by, not necessarily when it's to be done. In, this can be revised, but it's first blush at council scheduling out when things will be done throughout the entire plan in in relation to time we have, priorities, things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome. So the next tab over.
Tab or page?
Page, pardon me, thank you. Is it economic development?
It is.
All right, great. So if you look at your little C A O's note sheet here, you'll see that I've highlighted five categories and, and I'm not sure if they're in red in your sheet, they should be. So basically, if you look at the theme is economic development, and then for four of them, the priority that says supporting support prospective business interest, interest, let me reread that, support prospective businesses interested in locating to Sayward, into the Sayward area. And then if you look at the progress measures, first progress measure is investment in village of new business services. My observation there is that the progress measure is unclear. Like for all of these, I think there's some extra work that I would propose staff do and bring back to council. For the sake of tonight and moving us along, I'll just suggest to you that that particular progress measure to me is unclear. It's difficult to, to, to measure how investment in the village of new business services would be measured unless there's something identified there. For the next one down, which is increased campground usage, my comments are how does this support local businesses? So it's just, it's just a proverbial question I'm throwing out there. Again, staff will bring this back to council. More tourist traffic, my comment, can the village measure this? You know, in terms of do we have the staff resources to measure the amount of tourist traffic? So the next comment, more businesses advertising in the tourist info center. The info center isn't ours. We're not a business. Well, we're, we're a municipality, but we have no control over how many businesses can advertise in the tourist information center. So it may not be something that we in fact can set out as a, as an objective to support prospective businesses interested in locating to the Sayward area. And then the last one, which is supporting existing businesses, is a progress measure. And then the, or pardon me, is the priority, the progress measure is existing businesses, existing business continue to thrive. And again, just a comment that that's unclear. How are we able, how are we able to validate that existing businesses are continuing to thrive?
Okay, let me just stop you there for a quick sec. Counselor Breschett?
Yeah, with regard to the, the road traffic and tourist traffic, there's some really good numbers from last year from Sayred Futures when they had their tourist booth. I, I remember there being four thousand eight hundred unique visitors through road traffic that they were able to write down from talking to all the tourists that came through. So that might be a good direction to get information on that.
Perfect, thank you. Go ahead, C A O.
Thank you, Counselor Breschett. That's great. And so that's it for economic development. If you turn the page. So the suggestion here is a theme name change. And so what there was, if you look at the comment section, the, the former theme name was infrastructure upgrades and asset replacement. And my suggestion to council, and again, we don't have to decide on this tonight, is just to simply call that asset management. We're not necessarily always replacing something. Sometimes we're just improving the way we maintain it. And so that's basically asset management. Again, under asset management, and I've just sort of stolen that or, or made some sort of assumption, I guess temporarily, that we're calling that asset management. Under priority, I just want to have a discussion with council tonight, actually, on this point because, well, actually, I'm one point ahead of myself. Yeah, pardon me. So under asset management, where the priority is plan for full replacement of water, sewer drainage and road infrastructure. My suggestion is that we change the priority from from plan for full replacement of water, sewer drainage and road infrastructure to plan for rehabilitation or replacement. So again, asset management principle here, following an asset management principle that it's just as smart to rehabilitate an asset versus replace it. That's the, that's the underlying premise of asset management. So just a nuance there, but just to, to focus on rehabilitation or maintenance equally as much as replacement. And if you turn the page over, so this is, uh, this is again, under asset management and under the category or under the priority of plan for full replacement or rehabilitation of water, sewer, drainage and road infrastructure. Something that was added during our strategic planning session is complete sewage treatment master plan. And the mayor provided us some clarity on this during some earlier correspondence. What I wanted to point out here is there'll be some administration. So this is a new item and that we brought, that we fleshed out during our strategic planning. I only want to point out here that there's certainly going to be some administration required and possibly budget required, well, probably most, either budget or a grant required. And a consultant may be required. So I think as we, if we in fact move forward with this item, which is, I believe councils wish is to have a sewage treatment master plan, that we'll just need to consider this, either staff will be keeping their eyes open for a grant during the year and/or if a grant comes up, we may be coming back to council if we think we need to have that technical expertise added to a grant application or in fact have a, have an engineering firm write a grant for us. We may be coming back to council. At present, we haven't identified any specific budget amount in this year's budget to, to write this master plan.
Yeah, for me, for clarification, the idea is to, is to get a grant for the plan, to actually do the plan through Matt Colhaney, for example. Not to come out of our budget this year, but to actually lobby and try to get a grant to have a shelf-ready master plan for when funding does come available. We can just say, here we go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, that's what we understand. And then lastly, under tourism development, so if you turn your sheets in your binder forward to tourism development, just a note here, I did some follow-up at the strategic planning session. You may recall that we had some discussion around the tourism committee, much discussed tourism committee, did it exist, et cetera, et cetera. Just a note here for council to know that I have emailed Sayward Future Society and asked the president if there, if in fact the tourism committee exists. And if there is a terms of reference that in part speaks to the membership and composition of that committee because Counselor Breschett, who's the appointee to that committee, was unaware of that committee. So I just wanted to let council know that I'm following, I, I have followed up on that, and I'm just waiting back for a reply.
Excuse me?
So with that said.
Could I, could I have, could I say something about the tourism committee?
Go ahead, Counselor Paulson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have been going through all my previous emails related to Sayward Futures and the Tourism Committee and how it came about to be a default to Sayward Futures and I will have those ready for you when I get back, but as far as I believe, the Sayward Tourism Committee was absorbed into Sayward Futures under not completely correct terms, and I think we need to deal with that. If, if in fact, the Tourism Committee, Sayward Futures believes that they're taking it over, then we need to go back to square one and, and start where the Tourism Committee was declared defunct or extinct or whatever because it hadn't reported for three years during COVID. So I hope that we can hold on to that until after I can present my documentation that I have from how this all came about. Thank you.
C A O.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only wanted to add as a follow-up to Counselor Paulson that I've been working with Sayward Future Society towards the submission of a, a, a annual report that were, that was due to council for the twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one years. They're outstanding reports, and I've in fact received those. I've received that report in today. And so those will be presented to council on the March twenty-first regular council meeting. And I also am planning to have a staff report written for that same council meeting to continue the discussion of the correspondence that Sayward Future Society sent forward for the February, or pardon me, January twenty-fourth regular council meeting. So I think there'll be lots of opportunity to discuss this topic at the March twenty-one regular council meeting.
I, I, I promise that I will get you my documents before the twenty-first because it is and that's it. I will get those documents to you before then.
Good, thank you, C A O.
Thank you, Counselor Paulson. My staff reports, well, unless there's some historical background information that will help me in writing my staff report, otherwise you could, you could just bring that information for your own use at that meeting. Thank you.
It will help.
Okay, thank you.
So with that, with that said, my final comments regarding the council priorities would be, this is really, just like I said, a pared-down version of the larger strategic priority list that we went through. Previously, I've spent very little time on, on any sort of formatting, how it looks, anything like that. I do intend on spending some time to sort of put some lipstick on it, smooth the edges out. Yeah, and, and, and have it ready for a later meeting. But I would encourage you just to review everything, make sure it's as you, as you expect it to be. And with that said, I will turn the microphone over to Ms. Clark.
Thank you.
Okay, so here we're getting into the meat of it. So the first thing we're gonna look at is, uh, version one of the 2023 to 2027 financial plan. Now, I will say that version one is a starting place. So version one is after staff have looked at prior years, uh, actuals. Um, it's, it's, um, prepared after staff have spoken to department managers about upcoming needs for 2023. And there's a few other assumptions that are put into the ver- the first version. Um, well, wha- what I'll probably do is go through the entire plan, just for the new council, council members, just to go through each i- line item. And if there's any questions, we can stop. We, you know, you can ask questions. I'll give you information. I think it's probably beneficial if we just go through it, uh, line by line. Cao?
Yeah, just one thing I want to highlight for everybody's, um, convenience. We are really focusing, uh, especially tonight, on the 2023 budget. So, um, Ms. Clark has highlighted the 2023 budget in the, in the yellow color. Um, and that's where we're really gonna spend. The lion's share of our focus tonight is on 2023. Uh, uh, 2024 to 2027, I think we've mentioned this before. It's a statutorily required step for us to submit a five-year budget. Um, but we really pour our energy into 2023 and will be, um, uh, r- refining further years as, as they approach.
Yes, thank you. Correct. So let's, so, so this very first page is, um, the village's operating revenues. Um, th- this is strictly revenues, and we'll go through each line item, just so everyone's familiar with what everything is. So the first item is taxation, and that's, um, your municipal taxes that show up on your property tax notice. It's, it's nothing more. Um, and that's calculated every year based on the financial plan budget. There's a spreadsheet that I use to, um, plug in the assessment values for Sayward, and, um, it's a calculation that figures out the, the mill rate, which then translates to how much taxes each household will pay. Um, other taxes. So other taxes includes a utilities tax, so BC Hydro, uh, Telus, and any cable taxes. And that is, um, in the community charter, all utilities have to pay a, an annual tax. And that's based on, I believe, the prior, the, the second year priors tax revenues or something. Um, it's a, it's a, it's a complex, uh, calculation that they figure out. They send us letters saying, here's how much we're sending you. I then plug it into the budget. Um, the next item is, um, oh, and sorry, one other thing in other taxes is the payment in lieu of taxes, so the pilts. Um, and what that is, is for any property in Sayward that is federally or provincially owned. So an example would be the RCMP houses. We can't legally tax those houses, so we, uh, submit a, a form to the federal government to receive a payment in lieu of taxes. Um, the next item is Federal Community Works Fund Grant. That is a grant that is provided to the village every year. It's gas tax is the old, uh, term for that. And it's a conditional grant, um, must be spent on infrastructure projects, um, capacity projects. There's a, there's a list that they provide to the village as to what that money can be spent on, and every year we put it into a reserve. Um, next item is provincial government grants. That is, it's called the Small Communities Grant. And it is based on population assessments, again, another complex calculation that we have no control over. Um, we don't really know every year what we're getting. Um, so I've sort of estimated what 2023's number will be, based on prior years. Yes, Mr. Mayor? You just have to turn your mic on.
Thank you. You dropped it 103,000.
Yes. Now, the reason why 2022's is so much higher is because we had an extra payment in 2022. And if you recall, that extra, um, payment was used to purchase the land for the drainage project. So that was, that was a one-time extra payment in 2022. Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, the next item is a li- is interesting. I have a question mark. So this is the Growing Communities Fund, which was just announced by the provincial government a week or two ago. We don't know at this time what the dollar value will be for Sayward. Um, I'm hearing different numbers. I haven't confirmed anything. We won't know anything until March is when we're expected to hear as to what, um, dollar amount we are receiving.
Yeah, apparently the minimum amount they were talking about was 500,000.
Yeah, I heard that as well, but I, I don't.
We don't know for sure.
Don't know for sure. The next item is LGCAP Grant. That stands for Local Government Climate Action Program Grant. That is to replace the former Climate Action Revenue Incentive Program. It's basically, uh, money's collected by the government for carbon tax that then come back to communities to, um, spend on carbon-reducing, greenhouse gas-reducing, um, items and things in the community. So that, uh, I, I'm not entirely sure if that's an annual grant. It's a new program. I don't have a lot of information on it, so I'm still gonna look into that and bring more information back to council. Um, I, I think it's for three years. Um, but, but again, I'm not sure. So we're definitely getting it for 2023. Interest and tax penalties, that is, um, basically on your arrears, you're delinquent. If somebody is, um, um, overdue in paying their taxes, there's an interest fee charged, um, and also a penalty. So if you are late paying your taxes, um, taxes are usually due, you know, first couple days of July. Um, if you don't pay by that date, there's a 10% penalty applied. So that's what that number would include. General investment income is just monies that we earn on our bank accounts and our investments. Other revenue includes, um, miscellaneous bits here and there. We receive a, um, area A fire administration fee for, um, preparing the budget and administrate, administering the fire service for Sayward. So we get, um, a $2,500 admin fee, basically, from the SRD every year. Um, it also includes snow removal revenue. So if our public works department is clearing snow for the ambulance station or the school, we are able to bill them back for those services. Um, and other miscellaneous things, so tax certificate fees. Um, we have a lightning detection station over in the Kelsey Center parking lot. I don't know if you've ever noticed that caged-in sort of structure over there. It's to detect lightning. It's through, um, Environment Canada. We receive a, uh, annual fee for them to use our location. Licenses, permits, and fines. So that includes building permits, business licenses, and dog licenses. Um, yeah, now that is because we've got several, um, building permits in process right now. So I anticipated a higher, um, revenue for that this year. General operating grants, um, 2022 is a bit higher than 2023, and that's just based on timing and grants that are, you know, balls that are in the air and things that we've applied for that we're receiving. The 39,250 for 2023 is the grant from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities for our asset management project that we're working on. Sale of Service Recreation Centre is literally, literally that. So any of the funds that are brought in for the after-school program, um, user fees for the pool, drop-in fitness fees, shower fees, and anything related to the Kelsey Center. And sale of service other, that would be things like, um, planning revenue through the admin office, camping revenue, uh, Sayward News revenue. If people come in and want photocopies or faxes, we charge for that. Um, basically anything coming through the admin office. RCMP rent is monies we receive for the RCMP, RCMP building, because the village owns that building. RCMP rents it from us. And maintenance is the same. They pay us a monthly amount for any maintenance that we're doing on the building. At year-end, we do a reconciliation. If we haven't done much maintenance, we'll pay them back, or if we did do a lot of maintenance, they'll owe us. Uh, sewer revenue includes your sewer user fees, any, uh, parcel tax or frontage tax, and any connection fees for sewer. And same for water, uh, water user fees, frontage or parcel tax, and water connection fees. And solid waste is solid, your solid waste collection user fees. Um, I've included for 2023, a parcel tax line item for the drainage project. That's still to be determined. So it's, it's in here right now. Details will be forthcoming once we, um, have more information on grant funding for that particular project. So I'm gonna pause. Does anyone have any questions about this first page?
Um, yes. Total oper- operating revenue for 2022 was 1.4, and then we're looking at 1.377 for 2023.
Correct.
And that's adding that 30,000 for parcel tax. So say hypothetically, that wasn't there, then we would drop, of course, $30,000 less.
Yep, so.
But why the difference, such a big difference between the two? Is it because of the, it's because of the 103,000 up top, right?
That's part of it, yes.
Okay.
That's a big chunk of it, yes. And, and, and again, a lot of it is, not a lot, some of it is, uh, grant funding. So we received some grants in 2022 that we are not getting in 2023, or that I haven't included in 2023 because we haven't been approved. So it's not in there yet.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so the next page is operating expenditures for each department. Um, I think they're pretty self-explanatory. Legislative services with council expenses, administration is the office here. Um, election, we don't put anything in the budget for election in a non-election year. What we do is we transfer money to an election reserve, so that when we do have an election year, there's money sitting there, saved for the election.
Wasn't that 5,000? That was always carried, like, we had 5,000 every year?
Yeah, I think it's 3,000. I think it's 3,300 or something.
Okay.
It's on, it's on another sheet. I'll get to that in a sec. Recreation Centre is obviously all your pool, um, gym, you know, everything recreation center. Parks is your campground, um, your ball field, gardens, things of that nature. Public Works, self-explanatory, uh, roads, drainage, planning, police, fire. I don't need to list them all off here, but, um, if anyone has any questions about each department, yep. Just your mic.
Thank you. Um, for public works and parks, it doesn't, doesn't that kind of funnel in because they take care of the parks and like, shouldn't that just be listed under? I was just asking a question.
Yep, good question. Um, we separate it out just so we can, I, I guess, maybe have a bit better reporting on each function. Um, yes, public works takes care of parks, but it's handy to know, like, how much is being spent on the campground washrooms, and how much is being spent on maintaining the campground, as opposed to just lumping it all into public works. Mm-hmm.
Sorry, can you also explain, sorry, councillor Brichette, you go ahead?
Yeah, um, would education be under legislative services, or that be a separate line item if we, uh, take courses of that have an expense?
Yes, so any education costs, travel, uh, conferences, anything like that for council, would be under the legislative department, yes.
Drainage. Drainage, we, uh, last, last year was 123, 394, and this year budgeted 40,000.
Yes, so last year, we, um, as I mentioned before, we purchased that piece of land.
That's what that was all? Okay.
Exactly. Okay, so those are expenditures for each department. If we flip the page, um, this is sort of now all of our, um, miscellaneous bits and pieces. So amortization, transfers to reserves, transfers from reserves. Um, we do an adjustment for non-cash items. So amortization is a non-cash item. We're not spending money for amortization. It's just an accounting entry. So we adjust it because we don't budget for amortization, I guess, is what we would say. Um, m- money isn't put aside for amortization because it's, it's huge. It's, what is it? It's, um, to, o- over $200,000 a year. So unfortunately, the village, um, doesn't have the resources to, to put that much money away every year to pay for assets that are at the end of their life. So amortization is, um, it's an accounting entry to depreciate an asset. So, does everyone know what amortization is?
Yes.
Yeah.
You're good.
Um, what else should I point out on this page? Right. Um, so if we look under the, the first purple line item there, annual operating surplus deficit, the next item is transfer to LGCAP Reserve. Does everyone see that? So that, that's money up above. It was included as a revenue. Um, but we have to transfer it to a reserve because it's, um, monies that are to be used for specific purposes. So it, it can't be really included in this budget. It has to go to a reserve. So that's one transfer that goes out. Um, same, similar for the Community Works Fund. The gas tax has to go into a reserve, has to be spent on specific items. Can't be used for operating. Um, here's where you see your transfer to election reserve, Mr. Mayor. Um, and that number is based on, our last election was about $10,000 is what it cost. So I've divided it over three years. Next election is in 2026, so the monies that are sitting in the election reserve will be pulled out to pay for those costs. And then we have transfers from reserve accounts. So these are things that, uh, come into the operating budget. So for example, transfer from the CARP Reserve, which again was the old Climate Action Revenue Incentive Program. Um, in 2022, that 23,500 was used for the Kelsey Center glass accessible doors. Um, transfers from COVID Reserve, transfers from the Community Works Fund Reserve, transfers from the Roads Reserve, and transfers from the Election Reserve, because we had an election in 2022. Yes.
Sorry, we also, uh, last year, recall, we increased by one extra percent on our municipal tax to go into a general reserve. Correct?
Co- correct.
Is that not listed on here?
No, and I, I guess, I, I think the important thing for council to, um, take away from that is, uh, 1% increase in municipal taxes is about $3,700. So, um, over the year, so over 2022, several things arose, uh, emergency items, um, infrastructure breakdowns, um, the need to have additional reports done for the OCP. There's a whole list of things that happened in 2022 that were brought to council and, um, approved as part of the amended financial plan. So those monies were redirected. There's, there's no, it, it's coming out of surplus. Um, those items need to be paid for somehow, and that, tha- this was all brought to council last year. I don't know if you recall.
Yeah, no, I recall. But should there not be a line entry for that reserve?
Um, it, I mean, if council wants to transfer money to reserves, that's one thing. Can we afford to put money in reserves? No. Not at this point. And that's something that we need to talk about as we go through this process tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
May I ask a question, please?
Go ahead, councillor Poulsen.
Thank you. Um, the transfer from the COVID-19 Reserve, the $15,200 deficit, is that for the, um, concrete to the, uh, gazebo that wasn't completed last year?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other questions before I get down to the bottom of the sheet? So the, the, the line that we're, we're focused on, and the line that is the most important to council, is the, the bright yellow line that says annual operating surplus deficit adjusted. So you, you can see quite clearly here that we have a deficit in version one of the financial plan of $213,840. So if we flip to the next page, I just wanted to go over some of the assumptions that were made with this version. So this version of the financial plan, again, it's version one. An assumption was made that a 10% increase was made to municipal taxes, 7% increase to sewer user fees, 4% increase to water user fees, and a 7% increase to solid waste user fees. And no reserve contributions have been factored into this version. So with those, with those assumptions, I've included just a little blurb on the effects on a single-family residential home, and it's an average home. So some homes will see a higher change and some will see a lower change based on their assessment value if their assessment went up compared to the average or went down, or if it's average. So you can see in 2022, a single-family residential home, an average home, paid about $1,368 in municipal taxes. In 2023, with the assumptions I've included above, they'll pay 1,549, which is an annual increase of $181. And similarly for sewer, in 2022, the sewer user fee was 304, 2023, 326, annual increase of $21. Water, 408 in 2022, 424 in 2023, an increase of $16. And solid waste user fees, 246 in 2022, 263 for 2023, which is an annual increase of $17, total annual increase of $236. I included a little daily column just to show that over an entire year, it would be a daily increase of 64 cents, 65 cents, basically, not not even a dollar a day. And again, this is just starting place. This is just version one. Does anyone have any questions before I go on?
Yes, I do.
Well, you wrote it as, go ahead, Council Paulson.
And I'm just looking at the solid waste user fees. And when I refer to the operating expenditures in the, on the budget line for solid waste, it's dropped from 54,000 down to 49,000. So where is the 7% increase? On the version one summary?
Thank you, Councilor.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Council Paulson. That's a very good question. So solid waste in 2022, there was $9,000 allocated for share shed repairs and upgrades.
Thank you.
So that's, yeah, that's what that difference is.
All right. Thank you very much.
So on version one, at a $236 annual increase to the municipality, we're still at a deficit of 213, which legally we cannot have.
Sort of. So that deficit, we're going to talk about now, how do we, how do we address the deficit? So if you, if you look on the previous page, if you look on the previous page, you've got total annual operating surplus, that yellow line.
213.
Yes, and then you've got transfer to from surpluses reserves for sewer water and general. So that would be your prior year surpluses, if there are any.
Which there.
Which we'll go through.
Okay.
Okay. So if you want to flip to the next page, I've got a little blurb on why are we here? I'm just going to scroll my screen.
Not here, as in this room, here at the 210,000.
I want to know why we're here on earth. Why are we on earth? I I agree. Why aren't we Martians? Yeah.
Yeah. No.
You should, you'll learn quickly, yeah.
So yes, why are we here? Inflation is a very large factor. And the cost of various supplies and materials have tripled post-pandemic. And an example would be sand and salt, chemicals for the pool and the water treatment plant. They've tripled since COVID. The cost of propane and heating have increased by 30% post-pandemic. Another item is an increase in salaries and wages, so that includes our new CIO, the new public works position for continuity and succession planning in the department. Contract labor to deal with complex projects and large land developments, which we all know are are out there happening. And legislated employer health tax, that's new for 2023. If any organization is paying wages over $500,000 in a fiscal year, we are mandated to play, pay the employer health tax. So that's a new cost for 2023.
Excellent.
Yes.
Sorry, one, one moment.
Yep.
Councilor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you know how much that is, that legislative employee help tax?
Uh, thank you, Council Gilken. I don't have a figure for you tonight, but I will have that information for you for the next committee, the whole meeting.
Thank you.
Um, another reason why we're here is the official community plan project. So that project in 2022, we needed to get some additional reporting done. There were some additional costs, so that's another reason why we are where we are. Um, another reason is some reliance on consultants to prepare complex grant applications. So that includes the grant application for the water treatment plant, additional reservoir, the drainage project, and a couple other complex grant applications. Uh, also aging infrastructure and subsequent, subsequent costs for emergency maintenance repairs. So for example, new boiler is needed for the Kelsey Center. It was needed like yesterday, meaning it's an emergency and it's, it's got to be done for 2023. We're operating on one boiler right now because one boiler is out of service. And if the second boiler goes down, we are going to have a real problem.
We'll get a cost on that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um, another item is health and safety equipment that's been neglected in past years, so specifically fire department. And the need to cover unavoidable budget overages in, on large projects. So the biggest example would be the Newcastle Dam Project. The original budget in 2018 was 802,000, final budget in 2022, 1.194 million. Sorry, thousand, one, one million, just over 1.2. And that difference was funded by the Community Works Fund, 100,000 from that reserve. But the rest came from general and water surpluses, so your prior year surplus being drawn down by these projects. Um, and lastly, we're relying again on surplus every year. So we're not building surplus, we're reducing surplus to fund operating costs. So what are our options for addressing these deficits and specifically in 2023? How how do we move forward? So we've, the CIO and I have discussed some options, and we've listed them here for council's review. First, first off, increase taxes and user fees. That's, that's one option. Another option would be to create some new internal revenue sources. So we've talked in prior meetings about frontage or parcel taxes. Um, and those taxes would be used to go into a reserve to pay for capital infrastructure on sewer and water. Water meters, putting a water meter bylaw in place for any new construction businesses, that would bring in some additional revenue.
We have that in place, do we not?
A water meter bylaw?
Yes.
No, not yet.
Get close? Okay, thought we had that in place.
No.
Sorry, okay.
Additional parks and recreation programming, including increasing capacity at the campground, more service sites, bringing in more revenue. Recreation programming, so using the same staff hours, but in increasing the programming so that we have more attendance. That would increase some of our sale of service for the Recreation Center. These are all possibilities. Uh, and increasing the fees and charges on certain things. So increasing your fees and charges for, say, Sayward News, business licenses, photocopies and faxes, these are, these are all dollars, but they all help. Another option for address, oh, yep, Council Breschett.
What does an average business license cost for, say, coffee shop as an example, small business?
I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but I believe a business in the village, so if it's located in the village itself, I believe, uh, I want to say $100 or less. I think if it's a home-based business, it's 65. Yeah, 75 to $100 if they're located within the village. Now, if somebody is based in Campbell River but doing business in Sayward, it's 125.
Thank you.
Another option for addressing deficit is new development. So non-market change, meaning your assessment base goes up because you have new development. You've got new homes, you have new structures, you can charge taxes on those new things. So the, I listed the four main things that are going on right now. Uh, 711 Kelsey Way, which is Trailer Park, Hooverden Island Timberlands, um, the Adama subdivision and Van Brocklin subdivision, potentially. These are all potential options. The other, another option would be provincial and federal transfers. So good example would be this Growing Communities Fund that has just come out from the provincial government. We don't know many of the details on it yet, but great for Sayward, right? Grants, of course, is another option for addressing deficit. And here, here's an important one, I I think, that council should consider is contributions from the regional district for shared services. So that would include things like the Kelsey Center, the health clinic, the age-friendly van, fire department, which they already contribute to, and Sayward News. You know, these are all services in the village that everybody is using. Regional district, um, community members are using all of these services, yet the regional district is not paying for any of them.
Well, the fire department.
Correct, besides the fire department, yes.
Besides the fire department. So there's no monies that are brought in for the health clinic?
Not from the regional district, no. So so when I, so when I say that, I mean, the village owns the building. We are responsible for the maintenance of the building. If something breaks, an emergency, a flood, we cover the entire cost. We don't have any agreement with the regional district to pay for that. And I just put a little note that this is a council priority in the draft strategic plan. So it's something that staff are are aware of and we'll be working towards. Um, another option for addressing deficit is operating budget reductions or cuts. So reducing levels of service, cutting things out of the budget. And use of reserves, use of surpluses, another two items to address the deficit. Any questions on this page?
Think I need an antidepressant before we continue.
Can I ask?
Oh, yeah.
Me? Wouldn't, would an example of reducing the levels of service be cutting garbage collection back to biweekly instead of weekly? Or do we have a contract?
Yes.
Okay.
We, we do have a contract, but contracts can be amended.
Okay, thank you.
So the next page, I've just included a little chart on the estimated balance of the surpluses and reserves as at December 31st. I say estimated because there's still some year-end entries that need to be done. Now that the auditors have come and gone, there's a few little bits and pieces to post for year end. So th- this is my best guess of of reserve balances. So you you can see quite clearly that general surplus, well, basically everything, sewer surplus, water surplus, your Community Works Fund, gas tax reserve, transportation, infrastructure reserve, election reserve, COVID-19 reserve, all starting out January 1st with the balances I've listed there. I've included a column showing the 2022 withdrawals and little notes as to what those withdrawals are are. Um, any additions for 2022, and again, the estimated balance at December 31st. They're all going down, reducing, there's no increases. Does anyone have any questions on that one? Yeah, I thi- I think it's, it's, it's listed down there at the bottom what the withdrawals were. So for example, land purchase for the drainage project, the lift station generator project, Newcastle Dam, the remaining funds for that, water and sewer capacity studies, crack ceiling of the roads, 2022 election transfer and council-approved COVID-19 expenditures.
Any money left under COVID?
Yeah, we'll get to that. Okay, so the next two pages are the work that Kier and I have done, sorry, the CIO and I have done on, basically without, you know, doing much of anything but looking at the budget and where can we penny pinch? Where can we cut? What can we do as staff to reduce the budget? We've, we've sat down with department managers, we've, we've gone through the budget with a fine-tooth comb. And these are some of what we have suggested to to reduce, reduce operating costs for 2023. CIO?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Clark. So I only wanted to highlight here that over the last, last couple of weeks, uh, when we've been working at this, we've kind of, I guess periodically adopted this phrase that, you know, we're a, we we've, that we're the CFO and the CIO overseeing a small business that's hemorrhaging. And, you know, I, I don't want to overstate things, but you know, for a, for us to be almost $214,000 in deficit, the steps that we've taken here over the next couple of pages that Ms. Smith will bring you through is, you know, we've, you know, we've really sort of sharpened our pencil, and it's, it's respective of that $213,000 deficit. We're, I'm, I'm sort of really cautious about taking a deep dive into an operating, like carving away at an operating budget in a single year. Where, where I run the risk of the following year, you know, maybe there's added expenses or or just creating a trend where we're, you know, operating on bare bones budget. But we feel that we need to do this this year because of the position we're in. Like, we absolutely need to reverse our financial planning where we have been in recent, as opposed to what we've been doing over recent years. So I I just wanted to highlight the fact that these are, the, these are like working with staff to come up with these cuts. It's difficult, but necessary, I think, just to to get us on a, on the, on the path that we need to be on.
So a question for you. The projected loss of the Kelsey Center is 300,000 this year, going into 2023, I think I read. So if it is 300,000, which, I mean, our deficit, which we don't, we can't have, is 214, then with the S4D possibly us turning, changing that whole scenario would take us out of that deficit part, correct?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you clarify, take, taking us out of what scenario? So if the SRD was contributing?
If SRD contributed what there should be in terms of contribution from Area A into it, and even as far as, say, the rec study, the rec's, um, study comes back and states that it should be a regional, under the regional umbrella, that would take a significant chunk of that money away from our taxpayers, correct?
Potentially, yes. Yes. So what would that look like? I'm not sure. What, what is the regional district willing to contribute? I I'm not sure. I can't answer that question.
No, I understand that.
Yeah, but but yes, certainly if they are contributing, it would reduce the deficit, yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, the only comment that I would be remiss if I didn't make is recreation services are not one, uh, operating budget that we look to, for example, be revenue neutral. operating budget that we look to, for example, be revenue neutral on.
Like, we understand that it's always runs a deficit, understand that. But minimizing the deficit is what we should be focused on, and minimum, part of that minimization would be the Area A paying their share of, of that rec center, and of course, it being run, you know, adequately. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and it makes sense. I have reached out to some colleagues to get some information on other municipalities that have recreation centers that regional districts are contributing to, or vice versa, a regional district that has a recreation center that is then requisitioning the municipalities around the regional district to contribute to that service. There, there are many in B.C. I, I was quite shocked to see how many there were. So, that's definitely information that I want to bring to council. Maybe even information on what percentage is being contributed to that service, just, just for your information.
Yeah, I'm looking forward for that rec study to be, come out.
Yeah.
Published.
Okay, so, I mean, we can go through each, each item here if you'd like.
I think on some of this, we're going to need time to digest and review on our own.
Yeah.
And come up with questions.
Sure. Yeah, so, so if we, yeah, if we go to the second page of this document, we've come up with a total of, total savings of almost $75,000. So, that reduces the deficit by $75,000, and no changes were made to several departments, including the election, police, drainage, public works, planning, emergency, and clinic.
So, so I, I don't want to jump past this too quickly, okay? This is the heavy lifting that, that's being done here. So, I agree that you'll want to step away and look at things, but you know, do spend some time on these couple of pages. Looking, you'll see there's recommendations of, you know, cutting a budget, you know, from, from $500 all the way up to, you know, more, much more significant cuts. But, but please have a look at it, and we'll be discussing these pages more fulsomely at the next, at the next session. So, look forward to your comments then.
Is there, is there things that we've said that we're going to do but haven't been done yet, and the money's been put aside for it? Like, for example, the paving of the gazebo? Okay.
It's on, it's on page two.
Thank you.
So, to your point and further to Council Paulson's question earlier, if you look at page two, second item from the top, we've actually made a recommendation that, that that project not proceed. And there's, not to take away from Ms. Clark, I don't want to jump too far ahead, but the money that has, the money that's been set aside to do that particular project, pave the ramp leading into the gazebo, is coming out of the COVID budget. And Ms. Clark will talk about the COVID budget in the next few minutes, but it's our determination, this is just staff recommendations, that that $15,000 is needed more to cover the deficit than it is to provide a ramp at that gazebo.
Understood. Thank you.
Are there any questions before we continue?
Counselor Persett?
More of a statement than a question, but if we're going to defer or cut the concrete ramp project, we might want to be able to swing that into the camping ground refurbishment. And when they do paving there, just pave a ramp to the gazebo, cut our costs there.
Agreed. Put it in with the grant, if, so grant becomes reality. Agreed. Thank you.
Okay, so the next section is version two of the 2023-2027 financial plan. So, this version includes the proposed service level cuts on the previous two pages. Those have been incorporated into version two. And the other tax factors and assumptions for this version is 10% increase to tax revenue. That's the same as version one, that hasn't changed. A 14% increase to sewer user fees, it was 7% in version one. 8% increase to water user fees, it was 4% in version one. And a 14% increase to solid waste user fees, it was 7% in version one. Again, no reserve transfers have been budgeted for. Proposed reduction service cuts, I just spoke about that. That's including those previous two pages that staff have worked on to reduce service levels, find some money. It brings the deficit down from 214,000 to 120,000, and that includes the 29,910 Volunteer Fire Department Training Grant that we were just notified of, that we've received. So, I've included that in version two as well. And again, I've included a little chart just showing the effects on a single-family home, comparing 2022 to 2023 for each of the four categories, municipal taxes, sewer, water, solid waste, what that looks like over an annual period, and what that is daily. Again, under a dollar a day, it's 80 cents a day.
Counselor Persett?
What was your magic number to come up with zero deficit for tax increase? Is it 12%, 13%? Do you have a rough number there that zeros us?
Thank you, Counselor Persett. We did not do that analysis, but it would be very, very high. Yes, but I could provide that at the next meeting, if you'd like.
Thank you.
Okay, so, next page is, it's, it's literally the same format as version one. It's just showing the differences with those assumptions and reductions in this budget. So, nothing has changed in, in revenue. The only thing that's changed in revenue is that grant for the fire department. Operating expenditures have changed because of the service level cuts that staff are proposing. So, if we go to page three, again, the super important line, row, is the bright yellow, annual operating surplus deficit adjusted. You can see in 2023, it's now down to 120,000, 469.
Can I ask why the 30,000, 37,000 increase on the rec center in budget from actual last year? Last year was 261, and we're looking at 289?
Sorry, I'm not sure where you're looking.
298, sorry, recreation center?
So, you're asking, I'm sorry, you're asking?
Why is there a $30,000 difference between the actual of last, of 2022 to a budget of close to 300,000?
Yeah, I'm, I'm assuming it's because a lot of the expenditures were covered by COVID in 2022. Remember, we, your council was asked to support the Kelsey Center opening on Saturdays and extended hours on Fridays, but coming from the COVID reserve, so that would offset your expenditures. I'm, I'm assuming. I could, I could look into this further, though, for you.
Please, yeah, thank you.
So, we're, with version two, we're still sitting at $120,000 deficit.
So, hypothetically, the provincial government is going to be giving us something. We don't know what. So, say hypothetically, they give us 500,000. However, I do believe, you'll have, speak to that later?
Yes.
So, what I'll do is, everybody want to take a short recess? You look flush.
Do I?
Yeah, you do.
Okay.
And so does Counselor Gilkin. Okay. Counselor Paulson, I'd need to take a break. So, the, yeah, the, the mayor needs a, to check the weather, because it's very important. So, we will, I have 8:22, according to my watch. That says 8:25, so on the clock on the wall, we'll come back at 8:35. Okay, we're a little early, but we'll continue.
Okay, so, moving on. So, so again, there's, there's still a deficit showing in version two of the financial plan. And the CIO and I have sat down. Oh, yes, next page. Sorry. Yes, the mayor's already there. He's ahead of us. We've, we've sat down, and we've come up with a few item solutions on how to deal with specifically short-term 2023 deficit. So, one of the items is to use the remaining COVID-nineteen reserve. So, if the gazebo ramp project is indeed canceled for 2023, the balance in that reserve will be 96,573. If that is used entirely in 2023, that will cover a large portion of the current deficit. It's technically a conditional grant, but the conditions are extremely broad and non-exhaustive. So, I've listed some of the eligible costs, but these are, the, the, this isn't limited. It's not limited to these items. And the other source to address the deficit that we have come up with is, as the mayor was alluding to earlier, is the use of the new Growing Communities Fund grant. We don't know the details yet of this grant. We don't know how much we're receiving, what the conditions are, what it can be used for. From what I'm hearing in the media, it's to provide funding for whatever the community feels is needed. So, infrastructure, operating, I, I'm not sure of the details, but that will be forthcoming in March.
Just as a heads up, I have a phone meeting with MLA Babchuk on Thursday. So, I'll ask for clarification.
Perfect.
On that, and hopefully Thursday she'll be able to give me some answers.
Excellent. So, the, so that would be the short-term fix, per se, for 2023, if, if council... So the, so that would be the short-term fix per se for twenty-twenty-three, if, if council would like to proceed. With, with those options.
Just a thing, as you mentioned, short-term. So hypothetically, we can use some of this provincial new funding. However, it doesn't fix next year. It just gets us through this one, and that's coming later. So excuse me, will I just?
Okay, um, so the next section of your binder is, where is that? I think we're missing a page. Nope, I just flipped past it, sorry. Page two of that section is connecting twenty-twenty-three strategic priorities to twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-seven for long-term fiscal sustainability for Sayward. So this is, um, just what you were talking about. How do we now move forward from twenty-twenty-three that we've now addressed in the short term? To future years, which are also showing a deficit. So these are the items that staff have come up with. Um, and again, these are, uh, coming straight from your strategic plan, your strategic priorities. Um, and I'm, I'm not sure if the C A O wanted to, to add anything further.
Can we get, uh, numbers on the health clinic, on how many people from the valley use? The health clinic?
Yep, we can try to obtain.
Because for me to go to the S R D and say, these are the numbers, right? Let's look at some additional funding. That might be the, the way to go about that.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we'll, we'll make our best effort, uh, to work, we'd have to work with V H A to try to have an understanding of where their, for lack of a better term, customers come from. I'm not sure how privy we would be to that information, privacy, et cetera, et cetera, but we can try.
Thank, thank you. Yeah, just, uh, if we put it as numbers and not as names, then there shouldn't be a privacy issue.
Yep. And I mean, certainly we can get you the stats for Kelsey Center as well.
Please.
So, yeah, there, there's, there's five things there, and you can see them, the, uh, an agreement in place with the S R D to contribute to shared services discussed. Establish a water meter by law. Review tax ratios and user fees for twenty-twenty-four and beyond. Implement a frontage or parcel tax to fund reserves for capital infrastructure projects and grant, grant funding, of course, to be sourced and applied for.
Yeah, the only thing when you, when you talk about parcel tax, say perhaps it keeps the municipal tax portion down a little bit. From, you know, around ten or twelve percent or whatever it may be, but we're hitting people with an additional tax. So we can dress that up any way we like, but it still could end up being fifteen, sixteen percent.
Correct.
Yes, uh, however, if we can establish a consistent tax base through various taxes where we're, where we've got some consistency and we're not seeing spikes, I think the, I, I'm not going to think, it, it would be, I think, more palatable for residents, residents to see something coming, like this is what I'm accustomed to versus seeing, you know, a twenty percent, twenty-five percent, um, tax increase. Getting there, getting there at one point and then having a manageable, um, operating budget, that's reliant on a consistent tax basis is, I, I guess what I, I think would be more palatable. You also for sure.
I think this perception too should be not just say ten percent increase, you should have a in, an increase above inflation. So, okay, you have your seven or nine percent inflation rate. Well, explain to people that, okay, our taxes overall are going up five percent above inflation, which would be fourteen if it's a nine percent inflation. So that gives you more perspective that you're not getting a fourteen or fifteen percent increase, you're getting a five percent increase. So explain it in, in, in that format might, uh, do better. And also, if we do implement the frontage and parcel tax, I think that would offset and increase growing tax rate every year.
Thank you. Yes. And, and, uh, this is in addition to all of the other things that we discussed in addressing the deficit, right? So new development, big, huge, right? Bringing in more revenue. All the things that we've discussed prior in this meeting, there would be additional to this. C A O?
Yeah, I think, I, I think I can underline, uh, I, I can understate or overstate, um, Ms. Clark's last point. This is why during strategic priority setting, this is why we wanted to put the time into strategic priority setting. You can clearly see the connectivity now between where, uh, we talked about where you want staff's time being spent this year. And then if we can, um, have a return on that investment of time, uh, with the different initiatives that Ms. Clark's itemized here. And I think there's even a couple others, those are a couple others that are a little bit more loosely connected. You can, you can start to see how, uh, devising that work plan around our needs. It pays for itself, so. I think also I would add to, um, Counselor Brissette's comment is a good one in terms of how we communicate this. It is as, as important, um, or, uh, as anything. I can tell you lots of municipalities, especially when it comes to the, their utility rates, the history has been for a lot of municipalities to not necessarily pass on the operating cost directly to the taxpayer. And they find, a lot of municipalities find themselves in this deficit position, having to catch up. And I, I, if we have to create narrative, you know, um, some narrative, pardon me, some narrative, um, to help the, the citizen re-understand the position that we're in and, and, and the deficit that we are operating under, then, then as staff will do that to help deliver the message.
Is also in here before I ask, or what have you, is it also in here about increasing commercial tax? So for example, uh, the log sort?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So that would be part of the review of the tax ratios. Uh, and that's part of your strategic plan, yeah.
But that could also.
Potentially that could be incorporated for the next version of the financial plan. Yes, we can do some analysis on that and bring that back. Or for future years. Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, for, I think it would be something to look at.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the next section is just a quick little synopsis of, um, it's a grant summary, capital expenditures for twenty-twenty-three. This, um, I believe I've presented this to council at the end of January, but it's just listed here again for you. All of these projects in this list are subject to grant funding. And it, if successful, if any of these projects require a village contribution, so let's say ten percent, you know, ninety, ninety percent is grant-funded, ten percent the village has to fund, those funds have yet to be added to the financial plan. So if we're successful in obtaining these grants, that will be brought to council from staff. Where is that money coming from? The village contribution? And it'll be added to the financial plan with, with some options.
M F P, so on and so forth.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions on the grants that are listed here? Um, I will make a note that I did change a few of the comments, the B C Destina, Destination Development Fund, uh, that we applied for, for the Sayward Campground and First Nation Visitor Center that we were not selected for funding for that particular program. But we do have another, um, application with the redip program for the same project. So we're still waiting to hear from them. And I also included the, as I mentioned before, the Community Emergency Preparedness Fund for the volunteer fire department equipment and training, the twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and ten, that was approved. Good. So the next section, oh.
Sorry, Counselor Paulson, do you have? Did you have a question?
No, I, oh, sorry. I just said, well, that's good. It was approved. I'm talking to myself.
Okay.
Sorry.
All good, just checking.
So th- this is the last, uh, section of your binder, and it's just a summary of what we've gone through tonight. Um, just to summarize everything, get it into one document, so you can see where, where we started out and where we are now. Uh, we started with a two-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-dollar deficit. CFO, C A O, we met with senior leadership team to discuss possible areas to reduce service levels, operating budgets. That resulted in a seventy-four thousand three hundred and fifty-six-dollar savings. So that was then, uh, incorporated into version two of the financial plan. And it, it was analyzed to look at options to address the remaining deficit and propose those options to council. So for example, as mentioned, using the remaining COVID monies, I've got a hundred and ten thousand there, but that, that's a typo. It's ninety, the number I gave you before, ninety-three thousand. The use of the provincial growing communities fund, again, eligible ineligible expenses are not yet known. Apply additional tax increases, that's an option. Um, and also council can direct staff to identify further reductions to service level and operating budgets. Lastly, use of surplus, higher surplus. Um, so just some quick discussion points to wrap it up here. This, the C A O sort of, um, has this little saying here that we're basically being rescued by the COVID nineteen grant in twenty-twenty-three. Ultimately, right? Um, and we must use it.
Or lose it.
Well, I don't know if we'd lose it. It's potentially, we could. Um, but another thing that I wanted to, to mention, and this was, um, this was what the C A O had, had brought up, and this is a super, super good point. Um, when we're applying for provincial grant funding, if we apply and we're required to submit financial statements and our financial statements say we've got some money in COVID, almost a hundred thousand dollars, there's a likelihood that the province will say, well, you don't really need this grant because you have some money stashed away and we may not be approved. So that's a really good point. Um, and again, that money was supposed to be used for COVID recovery, so, um, reopening costs, info, uh, information technology costs. Things of that nature. And, and, and you, you see the little fact here from the, the province, it was meant to be used in twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one and possibly twenty-twenty-two. Now, I do know other municipalities still have funds in their COVID reserve. We're not the only municipality that still has some money. But from talking to colleagues, uh, most people are recommending to council that it be used up in twenty-twenty-three, like it, it must be used.
Okay.
And second page. You know, these are things that council needs to think about. What is council's comfort with our, the proposed increases to user fees and taxation that's been proposed by staff? What is your comfort, comfort level with our proposed reductions to service levels, operating budgets? And that the twenty-twenty-three strategic priorities are aimed at addressing long-term operating cost issues, which, which I believe they are. You know, that was a, a really beneficial, um, exercise to go through the strategic planning session and determine, you know, how, how, what is important to council, what that looks like, how it feeds into the financial plan and how we move forward. So I think that's all from me, unless there's any questions, and the C A O may want to say something to wrap up.
Yeah, I've got a couple of things I want to just mention. Uh, so first of all, just sticking with, uh, the budget items, if you can go back to your blue tab. And.
In one?
Yeah, version, yeah, the blue tab, yeah, uh, so like the, the last two pages, the second to last page that has the summary of proposed reductions to service levels. Just a couple of things I want to highlight here. So under contract labor grant. Um, so in twenty-twenty-two, you would recall, I mean, even in the short time that I've been here, I've seen significant evidence of the, the way that the village has used its contracted grant budget for urban systems to write numerous grants. These are highly technical grants that in the opinion of staff, uh, particularly Acting C A O France, where and actually previous C A O, uh, Johnson, where this was a very strategic decision to allocate, work with council to have that money allocated to be able to write those really subject matter expert style grants. This is a, so we've made a decision here, again, some tough cost cutting where that contract labor, um, line item grant, where it's, uh, was at twenty-five thousand dollars, proposed one is to shave ten thousand dollars off of that and rely on in-house staff. So that's relying on myself and the CFO to write grants. I just want to say that there is the capacity there from an intelligence perspective to a degree. Are we engineers? No. Are we, you know, we're not civil engineers, we're not hydrologists, we're, you know, like, there's, we can, we can rely on our colleagues. Sean Koopman, uh, with the S R D does a remarkable job. Um, looking after the village's interests when it comes to emergency management grants, and he, he helps us out there. But some of these high-level infrastructure grants, you know, if this is something that you support and you want to leave it with staff, uh, the way staff has recommended it, my caveat there would be that we may come back to you during the year. Um, requesting additional budgets, which would result in a budget amendment later on in the year. Um, if we feel like we need to go out, if we feel we, you know, use the, um, well, I don't want to use the, uh, sewage treatment plant because we want to get grant, we want to get a grant to write that grant, but.
But hypothetically.
But hypothetically, if, if in the opinion of staff, the village's interest would be better served having a, a, a different, um, intellectual person, a different person writing that grant that we may come back to you.
Which makes sense, because quite frankly, you're beeping. As you said, you're not all things, right? And if we're going to spend even by you two doing the grant, that's a cost.
It's a taking away from something else.
That's correct. There's, there's a financial cost to it. But if we're going to have this success because we need an engineer, an actual engineer to do the grant, we're going to have this success achieving that grant, which is a benefit to the village, then that's something we look at, right?
You're exactly right, Mr. Mayor. And so I bring this up because I, I can appreciate that you may look at this and go, oh, wow, look at this, staff of, are cutting. But I, I'm encouraging you to take a deep look at this, just like the mayor just did right then and there, and to say, okay, I see what he's doing, but is that going to take away from his time to work on the frontage tax? Is that going to take away from the C A O and the CFO's time to work on a, on a share agreement with the S R D? So, you know, I encourage you to take a look at this, push back if you want. Say to us, no, that twenty-five thousand dollar grant nest egg is something that we as council, we've established that pattern where it serves us. I prefer to have it there. Let's, let's find a way to find an extra ten thousand dollars out of the, out of the, the acronym grant, the, the provincial grant, you know, as an example. I, I'm sorry, I lost track of what that grant is called. The one that, the growing communities grant, thank you. So I, I, you know, I just wanted to highlight to have a look at that list and question us. We, we have carved away at it because we, again, we are taking on this responsibility of, of administering this. This, you know, so like I, like we've, we've come to say this hemorrhaging business, but that doesn't mean that we should make, that doesn't mean that you, you can't influence us, of course, so.
Well, we also have to take a look at, um, in terms of training for our new counselors, right? Because I mean, that's obviously, there's, there's a cut there as well. And so we have to sort of balance on what's the benefit of having them go to the training, offsetting the cost? You know, what are they learning? What are they coming back with? How does that benefit the village? In the next, you know, four years, right?
No.
The next three years. So I, we know that most of my stuff is, is covered off now. So there's a savings there, substantial savings. So, you know, um, Do we look at like, you know, for AVICC coming up? For example, you know, how many people are scheduled to go to that? Like it shouldn't be, I mean, with, with the kite, cut, cutting that we're doing, we shouldn't be looking at three or four people. Going, going from here.
So we've actually today just finished, we haven't finished it, but we've begun a, a training. Council and staff training spreadsheet. So we've got, we've begun the process of looking at all of the. Training costs for councils, conferences, that, all of the related costs, travel, per diem, parking, everything. Registration fees as well as staff, all, every staff member. Because every staff member affects our training budgets, right? And whether you need to get a lifeguard re-cert, whether you need to get a, keep your, our water sewer operators have to keep their. Credits. Ms. Smith has to keep her financial status. Ms. Clark has to keep her. Financial credits in, in order. So we've got that spreadsheet started and starting to, Jennifer is working on that daily. And that'll be something we can present to you at the next cow.
Counselor Burchett first, and then Counselor Gilken.
Yeah, I, I'd like. The events and conferences not to be looked at necessarily as all educational. These are incredible opportunities to make a connection with someone that could possibly lead to funding, an agreement, a relationship. Or hey, did you look at this, you know, Counselor Burchett? Oh, I didn't. Okay, this is how you get that grant. So it, it's a networking that's extremely important in that not just the educational component. That maybe you have a cost of $2,000 for the conference, but you might come out with a $100,000 win. And I've just known that from business as well. So I, I'm, I'm very touchy on that subject. And, you know, obviously, hopefully we can discuss that further.
I couldn't agree with you more, Counselor Burchett. There's been lots of occasions where I've been at a conference. There might be a session going on inside, but there's a group of people huddling outside and they'll spend a half an hour there. And they'll sort of say, you know, this is where the real learning is happening or whatever. So.
That's what just happened with me with iced tea, so.
Okay, so the last thing on our agenda. Is we just want to get a bit of a, of flavor from council. Or a sense of council's potential desire. To have a town hall meeting. So this came up during strategic planning. I think, you know, the reason why I raised it here as a topic is because I, I. I mean, I can say clearly, I got, I got a good sense that the idea was appetizing to some members of council. Here's the challenge. Is we, as, as. Ms. Clark has pointed out, we are, we're in a fairly tight timeline between now. And, you know, we've got the calendar, Ms. Ms. Clark has the calendar laid out. So that we get all of our readings done, you have the bylaws adopted and submitted to the province by May 15. If, and we are having a public meeting tonight. For, you know, we are providing an opportunity and another one at that in two weeks for the public to come out and comment. I just wanted to sort of raise this topic, bring it back to council. Do you want to have a, a town hall meeting this year to discuss your strategic priorities? And the budget, and if this isn't the year that you want to do it, so be it, we can plan for next year. But if you do, I've really only identified three dates that can work. And that's a Thursday, March 23rd. Or Monday, the 27th, or Tuesday, the 28th.
That's pretty quick.
It's, it's.
That's really quick.
Yeah. So, I mean. I mean, to, to put that into context, it is a month away. I think that the lion's share of the preparation of that work probably would fall to count or to, to staff. To put together presentations of, of the priorities and the budget. You can see what we've put together tonight. I'm really proud of the, of what we've got here. And so that can be, you know, effectively transferred into some method of, of PowerPoint or something else. Cost is.
No, what cost to do a public meeting?
Or time. Oh, public meeting upstairs, it's our facility. I think we have. It's not, wouldn't be a large group. So I imagine, I don't even know if we'd need a microphone. And you'd have a, you'd, I mean, if we have a micro, if we need a microphone, we have a PA system. Do we? Okay, we could, I mean.
We're the old disco one.
Yeah, we, we could, we could, I mean, I, so I, I think the cost would be. Would not prohibitive, put it that way. Everything else other than a PA system would be free. We have the, we have the seating, we have the space, staff put together the, the presentations, work with council about. Around council's role to, to, to MC. And then take on a, take on a Q and A period at the end, something along those lines is, you know, typically what. I, I foresee. For me, the toughest piece is. And I say this respectfully, when, when you ask a question, you have to be ready for an answer. And the type, the trend, the difficulty that I see for this particular year. Is that our process, the public is invited tonight, the public is invited again on March 14th. That's the opportunity for the public to come and say. More taxes, less taxes, more of this, less that. The town hall meeting is at the very, very end of the timeline. The reason why it's only the 27th and 28th is because the 29th, 30th and 31st. Is the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday that we prepare and produce the agenda for council. And in that agenda needs to be. Needs to be our, our bylaw for, for reading. Which, I'm bringing this up because we discussed it in strategic planning. I just want to be responsible and bring some information back to you, some options back for you. Do I think it's challenging? Yes, it would be very difficult, it'd be very challenging for council and staff. Following that meeting. To take feedback from the public that was contrary to what we had. Planned up until that, up until that time to take any recommendations of the public, turn it around. And have it ready within three days for the reading that's compulsory for us to move our agenda forward.
Counselor Burchett.
I agree that a, a public forum and town hall be really valuable. Just for the sense that there's some really intelligent people in Sayward. And sometimes you get that one idea that doesn't come from inside this room, that could be a make or break idea that we're just not looking at. And if we open up to the public, that could be a great opportunity to find an idea to that just might work for us.
Counselor Gilken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really love the idea of town hall meeting. I think that would be absolutely beneficial to the public. But obviously, since it's such a time crunch, I think it would probably be better to schedule it for next year. Possibly, or, or they can't do it later on after that, right?
Thank you, Counselor Tinsley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too love the idea of a town hall, except not this year because of what we've just, everyone said. Also, I believe that the public, as already mentioned, has lots of opportunity to either have been here at this meeting or the next meeting. So that's what I would say.
Counselor Poulsen.
Yes, I also like the idea of a town hall meeting, but it's imperative. That if we're going to spend all the time planning that, that people come out. And obviously, at this point, there's not much public interest displayed by the amount of people that turn out. However, it seems to me like the. The budget started taking a huge drastic change. When the, from the time the Newcastle Dam started. And when it, the end cost of it in four years was up to one point, almost 1.2. Hundred thousand dollars, is that right? One million, 200,000 dollars from 802. So I think something that we could do is go back to that time. When there was some drastic budget cuts that needed to come into play also. So reflects how we got to today with the low, the low tax increases. Or the tax increases maintained at 2.5% when inflation was going, growing much faster. So. So that it's, it sort of explains the surprise of, to the, to the public of how we got to where we are today.
Great, thank you. I also agree a town hall meeting would be great. And I support having them. And we should be having them annually regardless of budget. But one of the things, as the CAO rightly pointed out, if we're going to do this. On this timeframe. And you have to be prepared, everyone on council needs to be prepared to answer every question. Because the question may not be directed to myself, to the CAO, to the CFO. It could be directed to also council members. So you need to be, and I don't believe we're there yet. Counselor Gilken, you wanted to interrupt? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. So if, if that happened and, and obviously if this happens next year, well, I'll be a little, a lot more prepared. Obviously, me and Counselors Burchett, but if they asked me a question, right? And it was something that I didn't know, can I defer that? Just, I can definitely defer that, right? That's not.
Yeah, you, you. Yeah, you can, but I mean, the, the people in the public are directly asking you. And they're expecting an answer from whoever they're addressing the question to. They're not expecting every question to be deflected to staff, for example. Right? So I'm, for, for everything that I spoke of, I'm not in favor of doing one. This, you know, well, tomorrow's March, so this month. Yeah, it is. So I'm not in favor of doing that either. So do we need, do we need a vote on that? We don't really, we just basically had a verbal vote.
I, I think I just heard around the room that there's consensus that you're in favor of a town hall meeting. But that the timing is not, not optimal this year.
Right, but Counselor Burchett would like to do it this year. Is that not what I picked up? Go ahead, Counselor Burchett.
And going back to the primaries, and I say that is, the answer might not just be in this room here. You, you have to take your community in regard and, and draw some information from the community with regards to this. And, and get a feel what the people are thinking. You might have people show up, be like, we understand inflation's at 9, 10%. We understand that we, we have to go 15% with our increases for taxes. Or, or you might get something negative, but I, I think that all the answers aren't necessarily in this room and draw on your public. And if we can fit it in, I think it's in our best interest to, to fit it in.
Okay, so CFO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So to Counselor Burchett's point, I, I think that's really great. My thoughts around that were, why don't we really promote the March 14th meeting? Really get it out to the public that this is your opportunity, this is a financial planning meeting. Come to this meeting, provide your input. We can promote it on social media, we can get some, maybe even a poster out. That's just an idea.
Good idea. Go ahead, Counselor Burchett. Donuts, donuts are big.
Could we even do a small mail out too, to, you know, just?
Well, a small mail out. I think we. It's, I don't know, the cost just kind of popped into my head of doing a mail out.
I'd have to ask, down solar staff, previous, in previous municipalities, there's a bulletin board at the post office. Is there one here? Not anymore.
Not anymore.
Okay, so I think between. Between our Facebook page, I think be, you know, if, if there's opportunities, if you have your own networks on your own Facebook pages. Our website, I, I, this. This is not riveting stuff. People are not here tonight because it's. Typically isn't sort of, people don't look forward to, you know, budget discussions. But I think we want to emphasize the point that council is interested in hearing from the public. And that this is an important time of the year. So I think if we could do everything we can to promote it here. I'd like to, I mean, in lieu of the deficit, I'd like to stay away from. Increasing our, our budget in, in areas that we don't have scheduled. But, and I, I think we can achieve that with some of our regular mechanisms.
I think the CFO would beg to differ in terms of the interest. Regarding the budget. Counselor Gilken, last comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a quick question, it's completely off topic of everything we were just talking about. It's in here, it's on the summary of proposed reductions to service levels. And I, I just wanted to ask, what is IT new server? It's the fifth or fourth from the bottom. Sorry.
Uh, thank you. So through the mayor to Counselor Gilken, so that is for our. Information technology is what IT stands for, our server in the office, which houses all of our electronic files. It's five years old and it's been recommended that it be replaced in 2023 by our IT people. If the server goes down, we may lose all of our files. So it's, it's probably a really good thing to do this year.
There was a time here at the office where they lost all the data, all the files. And they had to go back and try to input them all in manually. Because the server was not up to, and that's a fact, that did happen here probably about eight years ago or so. 2015, wow, that was eight years ago. Counselor Tinsley.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question, I'm no IT expert, but isn't there a way to back up all the information?
Yes, yes, our, our data is being backed up to the cloud, but it's not a fail-safe. So yes. Good, good to have the server updated, yes.
Counselor Burchett.
This is the last comment while we're on IT. I'm willing to give up my laptop and sell it. If I could use my own private laptop, if that's available, because I really don't use it that much. And I find it just a nuisance expense to myself. So I'm happy to do that. If we could even get a few hundred bucks for it, I'd be willing to put that back in the purse.
I'll give you 52.
I will loan it to a economic development officer if we are successful in our grant application.
There you go. Okay.
You might have to fix the delete button, it doesn't work.
Could I just?
Go ahead, Counselor Poulsen.
I just want to go back to the town hall meeting. And as Lisa suggested earlier that we may want to, or, and also CAO and CFO. Both suggested that we may want to start working on the budget earlier, like late this year or earlier next year. And that might be a better time to have a town hall meeting to get. Input from the public of what might, where they might want to increase or decrease. Or leave the same or leave the, leave the country because the taxes are too high in their opinion. So that's another possibility. And the other thing I just wanted to say is. I was about your comment about asking individual. counselors or staff questions. I don't see this as a a town hall meeting as a you know, that all candidates meeting that we had where people could ask specific just questions to specific people. I would see it as a a a complete council decision about the budget, and if people bring up, suggest, ask questions or have suggestions about increases or decreases, that it be presented to all of council to take back for discussion.
Thank you very much. Okay, everybody. Number eleven, new business. None, question period. Do we have anybody? Okay, in camera. In camera, based on section ninety dash one C of the community charter. Do you have a motion, please?
I'll move that.
Second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed, seeing none. Motion is carried. Thank you, and we'll take